Voters in our region are looking to cast their vote in the upcoming general election. Northwest Public Broadcasting and the League of Women Voters of Benton and Franklin Counties want you to know the candidates. Recorded at the Washington State University Tri-Cities Campus, this is Vote 2023.
Good evening and welcome to the 2023 General Election Candidate Forums. My name is Ravine Jimenez and I am a member of the League of Women Voters of Benton and Franklin Counties. The League is a nonpartisan organization that neither supports nor opposes any candidate. In presenting these forums, it is our goal to provide opportunities for voters to become better informed about the people who are running for public office. These general election forums have been pre-recorded in person by Northwest Public Broadcasting at the WSU Tri-City Studio. They will also now be available through November 7th Election Day on the Northwest Public Broadcasting YouTube channel on the League's website and Facebook page through the Columbia Basin Badger Club and the cities of Richland and Pasco. Before I turn the program over to our moderator, Matt Lovelace, from Merrell College of Communication, WSU Pullman, I would like to bring your attention to our League's Vote video, featuring the wonderful Pasco High School Dance Team, and remember, be a voter.
The League of Women Voters of Benton and Franklin Counties presents...
It's time to vote! It's simple. All you need to be is: A U.S. citizen, 18 years or older, and a resident of Washington State. Jump into this opportunity today! There is still time to register, so don't go out. Take time and visit the local county elections office.
Your vote, your voice, your future.
Visit lvw-vf.org and get ready to vote in the next election.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters. Good evening to all of you watching. Welcome to our Vote 2023 coverage tonight focusing on the city of Richland. It's show three in our five-part Vote 2023 series here at Northwest Public Broadcasting. Tonight from the WSU Tri-City Studios, we're looking at races for the Richland City Council and the Richland School Board. Now, what we want here, of course, is to give voters out there a little more insight into these candidates, where they stand on some major issues that are affecting this area. Now, we have an hour tonight split up into three different segments. As with any debate, we have built this out to create fairness for all involved, the same time parameters, all answer-- will answer first, the same amount of times. Some people see that as a benefit, some people don't. Right now, opening statements and responses are set at one minute apiece. Now, as moderator, within the time parameters of this program, I do reserve the right to include more questions or, time permitting, allow for closing statements. Right now, those are not part of the schedule. We do have openers, but we'll all do our best to stay on time and on topic for the sake of fairness and transparency. And now that that's out of the way, that brings us to our first race in this program, the Richland City Council, position seven, seat incumbent council member Ryan Witten is here. Thank you for being here. And facing a challenge from Joshua Short also here. And gentlemen, thank you for your time. We generally begin with opening statements, and Mr. Short, you get to go first here.
Yeah. Hi, my name's Josh Short. I'm running for Richland City Council, seat seven. I'm from the Tri-Cities, born in Richland and grew up mostly in Kennewick, lived in Pasco a bit, but called the place home. Went away for university, but finished up here at WC Tri-Cities about a decade ago, degree in computer science. I'm interested in being more involved in my community, learning how it works, helping it work for more people, and just being involved in the future excellence and the sustained greatness of the place. And I guess I do have about 30 seconds left.
And I should mention, you can use all that time if you'd like or cede it.
I cede.
Okay, thank you very much. And Mr. Witten, thank you, welcome. And let's hear your opening statement, sir.
All right, my name's Ryan Witten. I'm running for Richland City Council, position number seven for reelection. I grew up in Prosser, and I joined the Navy in 2004 at the age of 18. I have a long history of-- family history of serving in the military, and that's given me a lot of appreciation for this country and a lot of patriotism for it, and I got to see a lot of this country and a lot of the world to juxtapose against what I grew up with. And I came back here with a renewed appreciation of the area that I grew up in, that I hastily joined the military to get away from, admittedly, but I came back, started working for Hanford, and now I'm working with PN Energy Northwest. And I wanted to get involved in Richland to ensure that this place remains the community-centered area that we all enjoy.
All right, thank you, Mr. Witten, Mr. Short. Appreciate you both being here again. And here's where we start with some questions, written and gathered, of course, by our League of Women Voters of Benton and Franklin Counties. The first question is a little broad, as some of them are, but it could set the table for some of the conversation to follow. That question, "In your opinion, what's the most pressing issue that Richland faces right now?" Or the Richland City Council? Pick one of the two. Mr. Short, you're first.
Social fabric broadly, maybe. A lot of people are going to city council and bringing up traffic and speeding problems, maybe the negligence of drivers. It speaks to maybe people not considering themselves as part of a bigger thing. And related to this and similar, we've got housing unaffordability and the problems that come with this, increased homelessness, socioeconomic pressure on people. Yeah, this social fabric, let's say.
All right, thank you very much. And Mr. Witten, same question to you.
Yeah, I would largely agree with that. The community-centered culture that we have here in Richland is what has brought people back who've wandered away from this area, and that has kept people here who took a temporary job and just found that they loved the place. Richland is growing, and in order to hold on to that community orientation that we have here, this small-town vibrance, we're going to have to do that diligently by fostering our first responders and our police and ensuring that our community is safe and clean, and that we take pride in who we are and what we have around us. And that's going to be something that we have to concentrate on doing deliberately for the future in order for us to maintain that. And we are at a crossroads right now. We're moving away from Hanford and into a more industrial future for the city, and I'm looking forward to that challenge.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Witten. Our second question, we'll turn right back to you as we'll alternate for the rest of this. And a challenge for just about everybody in the region, and that's affordability, and I know we've sort of talked about it already. What role would you like to see the city council play, or I guess what role can they play in addressing or creating some affordable housing, and maybe what that means, Mr. Witten?
Well, the affordable housing problem is nationwide. We're not alone in that, but city council has a unique opportunity, and then right when after I got appointed to city council, they came out with the results of a survey that we did, and we asked people in the city what they would like for development and zoning. And mixed-use development was-- had a lot of support, the most support that they'd ever seen, the people that were doing the survey. So I think that mixed-use development, bringing people and the services that they need, that they require, more closely together will reduce our dependency on automotive traffic and give us a bigger opportunity for public transportation that will cut down on our costs and our development. So we also need to have, as part of that, higher-density housing. Central Richland is prime for being redeveloped. There's a lot of opportunity there that we can revitalize that area, and I think we owe it to the city to do that.
All right, Mr. Witten, thank you very much. And Mr. Short, that same question to you. What role would you like to see? Maybe elaborate on something you touched on in your opening statement in creating some affordable housing here.
Yeah, and this is a good answer. In terms of zoning, this is one of the things that council can definitely have a hand in, what types of things are allowed to be built here. And it being a profit-driven industry, it's a little bit tricky to make housing affordable. If we treat it as one of the best investments that people have in their lifetime, it's hard to also make it affordable as they get returns on investment. So I'd hope that maybe in city council, we can at least get conversations going, we can inspire people, we can come up with programs, we can look at what other places are doing to meet these coming crises and take inspiration from there, offer leadership and inspiration.
Mr. Short, thank you very much. Well, our next question, let's talk about the city budget a little bit. Mr. Short, we'll have you go first here. Just wondering if you've had the chance to review the city of Richland budget, and if so, what's your opinion on the city's spending priorities? I guess this will get an answer in terms of your priorities as a candidate, and what do you think the city's spending priorities should be?
I would think I'm a bit too uneducated on this one right now, but in terms of where priorities should be, the things that provide the infrastructure for the city to survive and its people to thrive, infrastructure, making sure our waters are clean, our roads are in good repair, that our parks are nice and, yeah, what would be the word for it? Nice and enjoyable. And as far as I've seen and understand, we're not woefully mismanaged or anything.
We do have a tendency to talk about these issues as if they're issues, but a lot of these are just questions that we want a little enlightenment on. Mr. Witten, or Witten, we'll turn the question over to you. Have you reviewed the city's budget, and what do you think of the spending priorities in it?
Well, we just went through a workshop for next year's budget, and I had the opportunity to go through that in detail, and the priorities are for our services, our infrastructure, our roads. This will be the first year that our road upkeep, our road maintenance program is going to be fully funded, which is great news, and we need to keep that going. One of the things that we talk about when, online especially, in debates about government spending and how to reduce government spending, one of the first things that comes up is, who's going to provide the roads? So if the city can't provide the basic services that the city requires, then we're doing something wrong. So maintaining our parks, maintaining our roads, maintaining our first responders and law enforcement, those are all the biggest priorities, and everything else comes second to those.
All right, Mr. Witten, thank you very much. Well, our fourth of six questions in this race, as we're approaching now 11 years of legal recreational marijuana in Washington State, and I know Tri-Cities communities have been pretty resistant to allow marijuana, at least marijuana retail, in the area. That was until just this year, Pasco approving the sale inside the city limits. So that question now turns to the Richland City Councilors, or candidates. Should Richland consider doing the same, and why or why not? Mr. Witten, you go first.
Well, I got out of the Navy in 2012, and legalizing marijuana in this state was one of the first things that I voted for. I was in favor of legal marijuana and recreational, but unfortunately, I think our culture really isn't at a place where we can really afford the proliferation of this. I'm seeing more kids skipping school and smoking pot in parks, and we have a drug problem as it is already. And honestly, if you want to get ahold of this stuff, it's pretty easy around the Tri-Cities as it is. Do we need more pot shops? I don't really think so. If the people of the city of Richland, if they want us to put it to them on the ballot as a vote, then I would be in favor of that and let the people deciding directly, but as a member of city council, I would probably vote against it.
All right, Mr. Witten, good insight. Thank you very much. Mr. Short, same question to you.
Yeah, Richland's in an interesting place with this as we figure out what the federal state of marijuana is. I think there's been a bit of fear around allowing it here because federal contract stuff, and it could cause some troubles. I mean, that aside, I don't have any problem with it. It's legal in the state, we should have it in the city, and drug abuse is a symptom of an underlying thing. Having good-quality recreational cannabis available that isn't laced with other things or adulterants and isn't going to cause people overdoses, or they know what they're getting, is important for us, and the people that are going through trouble, that want an escape are going to be able to find an escape no matter what. These recreational legal shops aren't driving problems.
All right, Mr. Short, thank you very much.
Some in favor.
In short, you had a full minute, you answered it in one second. That works that way, too. Well, question number five, actually, this one comes from Richland High School, and we want to thank our students for showing some interest in your city, and eventually you'll get to do your civic duty as well. That question, "Mr. Short, if elected, do you have any plans to improve the master planning of the city, specifically when it comes to some of those older and empty buildings in downtown Richland?"
Yeah, I would love to see some master planning improvements. The quality of life, the livability of our city needs some improvements. It shouldn't be designed around cars, and even walkability isn't enough. It needs to be accessible for people that have other needs in terms of getting around. It needs to be a place where families like to be, where people of all ages like to be, a place to retire, a place to grow up, a place to go to school, to work, all these things. So, yeah, anything toward making that better, making it like, maybe a city that other cities look to for inspiration on how to be, definitely within my interests.
All right, Mr. Short, thank you very much. Same question to you, Mr. Witten.
Yes, the development of uptown in central Richland, north Richland, is very important as the city has expanded south. It's running into its limits, and so in order to get better, we're going to have to rezone, get more mixed-use development in central Richland, and some buildings are going to have to go in favor of, say, the apartments that just went in next to Howard Amon, and there are abandoned buildings that we have to take care of, but unfortunately, there's some constraints that are going on with, in some cases, that I can tell you that the city is very apt to get after these developments and bring in more business in more residential areas for the people, but there's a lot of things that are outside of our control that are keeping us from doing that. But as the opportunities come, we're very much looking to take advantage of those.
All right, thank you, Mr. Witten. That was question five, and I'll just let our people in our production staff know, I think we freed up a little bit of time here. I'm going to add closing statements here. We'll do some 30-second closing statements. We have one more question, but mostly, that closing statement will be a nice way to add anything else that you think we might have missed in this. Let's get to that sixth question here, and like many, this one looks at growth in the area, specifically striking a balance between the need for more and more and more, but then that desire, as everybody introduces themselves, to say, "I want that small-town feel." So how would you view your role in the city council in terms of preserving that environment, that quality of life, but then trying to attract business and growth to your city?
Yes, well, we have the urban development district, or targeted urban development in north Richland that's bringing in new industry, and we just saw the expansion of ATI, and this is one of the things, like I said, with the community-oriented culture here in Richland that we need to preserve. A lot of that comes down to being a safe environment. If you're not in a safe environment, you have a tendency to be more guarded and more closed off, less friendly. Friendliness is one of the things that we have going for us, it's one of the things that keeps people here and fosters that community environment. So keeping our first responders and our police respected and able to do their jobs, keeping our parks clean and safe, and coming out at everything with a compassionate spirit to not force people away or be impersonal or mean, but to come out of everything with a human touch.
All right, Mr. Witten, thank you very much. Mr. Short, same question, balancing that need for growth, which everybody wants, and that desire for small-town, which everybody wants. How do you balance that?
Yeah, that's definitely a tricky one. That's a question that we all need to figure out collectively. What are our values? What are our needs? What's the attainment and the striving for? Are we leaving people behind as we do this? Are we damaging our environment that supports us and that we need to live? So what cost do we pursue things at? And for the necessary things, like honestly, this is a great place to be. Look at all of the science and research happening around here. So really continuing on with our good momentum is how to address it, and in the hearts of most of the people living here, if they like the small-town feel and interact with it as such, then it stays a small town despite having cool technology and big employers like the lab, and it's got a lot going for it.
All right, Mr. Short, thank you very much. And like I said, we freed up a little bit of time, so we could probably talk for an hour about the issues, but how about we just give you 30 more seconds? Mr. Short, we'll start with you again with the closing statement, sir.
Yeah, well, I'm here to help participate in my community. I would appreciate the vote if I seem to be somebody that you trust acting as a voice for Richland. I want all of us to have a place, a voice, a vote, things to do here, ways to contribute to our community and make it better, and this is just me trying that. So thank you for your time.
All right, Mr. Short, thank you very much. Mr. Witten, 30 seconds.
Yes. Richland has a small-town community that is very welcoming, and as we grow, we're going to need to make sure that we don't lose that with the impersonal enlargement of the city as industry comes in, and I really want to make sure that as we progress, we remain a place where people feel that this is a home and they're glad to call it a home. So if you feel I'm the right man for the job, I'd appreciate your support in November.
All right, gentlemen, thank you both very much. Appreciate your time. Joshua Short, Ryan Witten, we thank you for coming into our WSU Tri-City Studio. These are your candidates for Richland City Council, position seven. And a reminder that we also have covered the other Richland City Council races on the ballot. Find those in our previous Vote 2023 programs. And our focus now turns to Richland's public schools, the school board filling a few seats. We're happy to have a few of those candidates in here today. Now, you'll notice I have three people in here in studio with me. I will explain, starting with Chelsea Beck in here running for the Director III position. Thanks for being here today. And she's running against Nino Capitula. Ms. Capitula said she could not be here. We will hear from her in a moment. We also have both candidates in the Director IV race, Katrina Waters, Carrie Williams. Thank you so much for being here as well, ladies. We'll start with opening statements in the Director III position. Let's give one minute to you now, Ms. Beck.
Thank you, Matt. So I'm Chelsea Beck, and I decided to run for school board because I'm passionate about public education. My mother has worked in public education for my entire life, so I was raised to really respect and value the power that public education has to provide opportunities to all students, no matter what their background. This is my seventh year as a parent in Richland School District. Yes, that does mean I now have a middle-schooler, which is terrifying, but it's actually been really great, and my daughter loves it, so I appreciate the hard work Richland does to ease that transition. I don't think that my perspective as a parent represents all the people in Richland, so I know I have a steep learning curve in order to understand the issues and priorities that face all the families across the district, but I am a quick learner, a good listener, and I would really appreciate if people would give me the opportunity to serve on the school board, and I hope I can help Richland be an even better school district. Thank you, Matt.
All right, Chelsea, thank you for being here. And Ms. Beck's opponent, Nino Capitula, like we said, could not be here, but she did send in this statement.
Hello, I am Nino Capitula, and I am running for the Richland School Board, and ballots are due November 7th. I am deeply committed to ensuring a bright future for our children. This commitment includes a strong emphasis on essential academic subjects. As a mother of four, raised by a single mom in a country with a former Marxist government, I deeply value my citizenship and believe that a civics and core academic focus in our classrooms are crucial. According to the 2022 Nations Report CARE, the NAEP report, 74% of American children are not proficient in math, and 71% are falling behind in reading. According to the 2023 K-12 Education Facts provided by members of the Washington State Legislature, over 62% of Washington students do not meet grade-level standards in math, and about half do not meet grade-level standards in English Language Arts. This data confirms that it is critical that Richland School District focus on core academics such as language arts, math, and science. If you elect me as a school board member, I will work hard to support academic proficiency in our schools. Furthermore, a recent survey indicates that nationwide, 70% of voters, regardless of their political affiliation, believe that civics should be a more significant part of school curriculum, and over half want to see a greater focus on academics. In addition to these priorities, Washington State's teacher training programs rank among the worst in the nation in providing teachers with the training they need, according to the National Council on Teacher Quality. Our teachers deserve better. If elected to position three on the Richland School District Board, my top priorities will be enhancing a focus on academics and working to ensure proper teacher training. Together with teachers, administrators, and engaged parents, we can make a meaningful impact in our children's lives and strengthen our community for years to come. If you're interested in volunteering or contributing to my campaign, please visit my website at ninoforrichland.com. Ballots for the November 7 election will arrive in your mailbox shortly after October 20th. Thank you for considering my candidacy. I would be grateful for your support and your vote on November 7 for Richland School Board, position three.
And that brings us to the Director IV position with Katrina Waters and Carrie Williams. We'll get opening statements from both of you since you are here. Ms. Waters, you go first.
Thank you, Matt. I'm Katrina Waters. I'm running for position four of Richland School Board. I'm a parent of three recent Richland graduates, and like Chelsea, I really value public education. I myself am a product of public education, and I've been very privileged in having my children be raised through the Richland School District. I now have time with them being graduated to be able to serve on the school board and have more time to do that. I feel like I have a unique background that I can bring to this position in my professional experience as a scientist and a manager at a large research institution to help with the accountability and transparency of decisions made by the school board, but also to serve the larger community as a parent and as a community member, to represent all families and all students, to improve our academic performance, improve safety in the school, and really be able to serve all of our students to have an excellent education.
Ms. Waters, thank you very much. Good to have you back here in our studio. And Ms. Williams, your opening statement.
Yeah, thank you so much, and my name's Carrie Williams. I am running for reelection to the Richland School Board, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting us this evening, and Matt for being here, and all of those who are tuning in. I hope to earn your vote this evening. And I am running really because I'm very passionate about education. I always have been. I've had the opportunity in most of my adult life to work or volunteer in this great field. I was an elementary school teacher many years ago. I have a master's degree in education, and now I'm a stay-at-home mom of five beautiful children who are all in our Richland schools. We've got one high-schooler this year, and we have a middle-schooler and three elementary school students, and so I want this, it's deeply personal for me, for this district to succeed because I will be in this district for many years to come, and my top priority has been and always will be student academic success, and I hope to talk to you more about that this evening. Thank you.
We'll get an opportunity. We have just a few questions, but we do want to hear from all of you on some important topics in the district. And first of all, I want to thank you for bearing with me on a really long explanation of how this forum will work. We'll do our best to simplify it here. This will just be a three-person forum here in regards to questions on the school district and serving on the board, with a reminder that Ms. Williams and Waters are running against each other for the same spot. So let's start with the first of several, provided by the League of Women Voters. Perhaps we start by addressing maybe the elephant in the room, the recall of three board members, Semi Bird, Audra Bird, and Ms. Williams here with us. Ms. Williams, we'll give you the last word on this, but Ms. Beck's, since you're first alphabetically. You get first word, and the question is simple. What's it going to take for the board to move past this whole recall situation?
That's a great question. Thank you, Matt. Well, I think the voters made their decision. They went forward with the recall. They've already filled the seats, so I think the school board is already working at moving forward with the coming election. We'll replace two of those people, and I think we're already doing what we need to do to move forward. I think we're on the right path, and the current board members, the ones that are staying on, are working well together, and I think we have good things to look forward to.
All right, Ms. Beck, thank you very much. Ms. Waters, same question to you. How do we move past this whole thing?
So I think we have a lot of rebuilding to do in the community and in the district to rebuild trust and faith in the board. There's been a lot of divisiveness through the last couple of years, and as Chelsea said, the voters decided to make this decision in moving forward, but I think as a board, there's a lot of work to do to communicate better, have more transparency, more dialogue with the community, and have more opportunities to collect feedback from the community as well, so that there's more transparency and folks are on the same page with how statistics are made and how they impact the community, more transparency about the fiscal responsibility and in some of the decisions that are made. So I do think there's a lot of work to do to rebuild trust in the community with the school district.
All right, Ms. Waters, thank you very much. Ms. Williams, I'll ask you, how do we move past the recall?
You know, I think that in the last 18 months, and this hasn't been highlight of headline news, is that we, as a board, really did so much, I would say even most, more in the last 18 months than we've done in the last decade for student academic outcomes. We made such huge, huge changes to how we teach reading in particular, which is something that I'm so passionate about, and that really took a ton of time and a lot of work, and I know a lot of teachers are so passionate about this as well, because right now, our academic scores, specifically in reading and math, are just, you know, they're not where they need to be. We have nearly 50% of our kids are reading on grade level, which means we're leaving behind 50% of our students, and so in the last 18 months, we've just taken great strides to get our teachers given the tools that they need in order to best teach our students. And so though this has happened, I really think that when it comes to the important things that are happening in the classroom, those things are happening right now, and those, I'm so excited because I really was instrumental in that change of making, shifting our methodologies on how we teach kids how to read. And so that, to me, this happened, but I really think that our children in our classrooms, we are the most important, they are seeing the benefits of all the great work that we've already been doing.
All right. Thank you. All right, thank you, Ms. Williams. All right, let's move on to question number two. Ms. Waters, we'll have you go first for this one. Interesting question, because we asked how you would define parents' rights and perhaps to what extent they're limited, in your opinion, when it comes to what happens in a classroom.
So, I mean, I think parents have a right to choose what the curriculum is that their students are taught, and to review that curriculum and make a decision about whether they participate in a specific curriculum. I know that the school district has policies in place for parents to be able to review the curricula and to be able to opt out or ask for alternative materials for different types of curriculum. And I think those things are very important. Even with new curricula that will be rolled out, the state mandates that parents have the right to review the materials, the right to be informed about materials, and the right to opt out. And so in my opinion, I think it's very important as a district that we provide the opportunities for parents to be able to do that, to exercise those rights, and to not make it difficult, to not make it buried down in process and procedure, but to be really transparent about how they can do that, to ultimately exercise their rights.
Ms. Waters, thank you very much. Ms. Williams, your thoughts on defining parents' rights, since everybody probably has a slightly different definition of that, and how, what's the extent of those in a classroom?
Absolutely. So, you know, for me, I'm a huge champion of parents and being involved in their kids' lives, and that's really, we see data, so many studies after studies. Data shows us that students who succeed have parents that are behind them, most likely, and they're more likely to succeed if they have involved parents. And so as a school district, we need to be engaging parents and asking them to be involved and inviting them, and making our schools welcome to our parents, to be there physically or whether it's PTO or whatever it may be. We want our kids to succeed, and through parents, that can happen. And I have never met a parent that didn't want the best for their own children. And so we, as a district, need to be making sure that we're doing all that we can to make sure that parents know that they are number one in their children's lives. They know what's best for their children. It's not, it's not the teacher, it's not the administrator, it's the parents that know what's best for their own children. And so we need to be making great lengths or going to great lengths to make sure that those parents are welcome and encouraged to be there and participate in their kids' education.
All right, thanks, Ms. Williams. Ms. Beck, same question to you.
Yes, so I agree with things that Katrina and Carrie have said. I think that parents have the right to opt out of any curriculum that they don't feel is appropriate for their child or their family. I've always found Richland School District to be very open and make these things readily available. I was just at my daughter's open house, all of her curriculum, what textbooks they would be using, all of those things are open and available to parents. So I completely support parents' rights to go through those things, decide if they are or not appropriate. And I think Richland School District, from what I've seen, does a very good job of making those things accessible.
All right, Ms. Beck, thank you very much. And like I said, this will be sort of a quick forum. We got one more question here, and I'm going to ask this Ms. Williams first. Richland School Board's been out in front of this issue since long before most of some of the recent discussions around banning books. There was even a proposal to change district policy on the issue back in November of last year. So let's get each of your stance on this issue. What's your position on keeping certain books out of schools and balancing how you feel personally versus how the rules should be written? Ms. Williams?
Yeah, this is a great question and one that we'd actually talked about when we were here last. For me, we are lucky to live in the community that both West Richland and Richland have a thriving public, public library system. And because of that public library system, I can easily say for me, I always will fall on the side of parents, and I don't want to contradict in our classrooms what's happening in the home. And what's happening in the home is important. And so in our public school system library, that's a place where parents are not involved 100%. We don't know exactly when our kids are going to the library, especially in our secondary schools. We don't know when the kids, our kids are going to libraries. Oftentimes, their books are in their library, or in their lockers, or in their cubbies, or whatever. Whereas a public library system, it is a place where parents, in order to get a public library card, parents have to be involved. And so when they're in our care, when the students are in our care at the public schools, we need to make sure that our books are such that it wouldn't be directly defying what's happening in their homes. And instead, turn those kids, those families that really want to have a book that may not be in our public school system, take them to the public city library and go get that book and have that engaged conversation with your child. Because I, I value, oh, and I am done with time, but that's, there's the short version.
Thank you for watching the clock. It goes by fast sometimes. So Ms. Beck, same question to you, in the shortest version of it, what's your stance on banning books in schools?
Yes, thank you, Matt. I do disagree with Carrie on this one. I've reached out to librarians at the schools. It's very easy for parents to email or call and restrict access for their child. Since we did just discuss parents' rights, I would say that if we remove a book, we're taking away the parent's right to decide if that is appropriate for their kid or not. You've just decided for me that it's not appropriate. So no, I do not agree with banning books. I think that parents have the ability to say they don't want that for their child, but it would not be fair to take that away from every child in the district.
All right, Ms. Beck, thank you very much. Ms. Waters, same question.
Yeah. So as I said in our last forum, I think, you know, banning books to appease a few people for what they find offensive also violates the rights of the many who don't find that material offensive and would want their child to have access to those materials. And so I agree with Chelsea. I disagree with any policy of banning books. I think the important thing is that we make sure in our school districts that we have access and restrict access to age-appropriate materials in our libraries, that we make sure that our district and our libraries are adhering to the policies that are put in place, and that those policies are effective and that they're working appropriately, so that kids don't have access to books that are not age-appropriate, and that parents can opt out of materials or books for their students, even as they could for the public library, and that those procedures are actually working, so that the kids can access them. Otherwise, as Carrie mentioned, the public libraries have some of those same materials, the internet has those same materials, and so it's really impossible for us as a community or a society to block the access for these things writ large for a large group of people. And so I think it violates the rights of some parents to remove books based on the desires of a few.
All right, thank you very much. You know, I'm sort of, as you see that clock run out, I'm with many of you, saying there's probably not enough time to discuss all these things. As a parent of a couple of elementary school kids, we could talk for a long time, but that's the magic of television here. We want to thank you all three for coming here and enduring this forum. And I'd say, pretty effective snapshot into what you'd all like to represent on the school board. Ms. Carrie Williams, Katrina Waters, running for Director IV, and Ms. Chelsea Beck here, thank you very much, running in the Director III position against Nino Capitula. And that brings us finally to our last race, featured here in our coverage of the Richland School Board races on the ballot. Both candidates here for this one, Jean Nemeth and incumbent Jill Oldson, going for the Director V position. You know the rules to this, and they were here this summer. That means they've prepared opening statements. Mr. Nemeth, your last name comes first alphabetically. That means you go first here. Your time starts now.
All right, great, thank you. So Jean Nemeth, running for Richland School Board Director, position 5. Four years ago, I voted for the, for Ms. Oldson, and I've witnessed a decline in student achievement, loss of transparency, and lack of parent inclusiveness, and that's why I stepped up to run. I believe there's a clear choice in this election. You have my opponent, who was in office and stood by and watched the decline in student achievement and did not implement appropriate corrective measures, is endorsed by the Teachers' Union and supports their agenda, which is in direct conflict with the school board director role, does not agree with or support the significance of universal screening and its impact to student achievement, and has accepted subpar goals by, I'll give you an example where, you know, we have schools that are setting 42% proficiency goals at the end of next year for mathematics, versus me, who's, who really wants to restore back to student achievement and restore Richland to a center of excellence like it should be. And I have a plan. I wish I had more time, but I'll stop there.
Well, thank you very much for watching the clock, but we do have questions, and so we'll get to a lot of these topics as well. Ms. Oldson, your opening statement.
Hi. First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for once again providing this opportunity for us. My name is Jill Oldson, incumbent for Richland School Board. I've currently served, going up on my fourth year, fourth year in like five months. My, I've been involved in the district for the last 20 years. I have two kids that have gone through the district. You know, it's really interesting when I hear individuals that talk about academic achievement and success. My vision of public education isn't about test scores or what that looks like. It's about making sure that our kids have what they need in a whole round as a whole child to be successful in what the world has to offer. Our basic education needs important, absolutely. Do I put a lot of validity in the state-based test scores? Not so much, particularly when they average zeros in for individuals that opt out of that curriculum, so the validity and reliability of those numbers aren't very accurate. I think there's a whole gamut of issues that we need to look at, but primarily, we need to trust the teachers and the parents to make sure what's best for kids.
All right, Ms. Oldson, thank you very much. Mr. Nemeth, thank you for being here. We'll get to our first question, and I know you want to talk about a lot. You know what? Some of the answers to those questions were in this question coming up here. And in that primary forum, you both had talked about the need to make academics the focus of the Richland School District Board of Directors. I'm sure that feels hard to disagree with, but the league wants to ask you to be, please be specific about the implementation of something like that. And we just heard your answer, Ms. Oldson, but I have to ask, would it be through test scores, or is there some other method? What specifics would you have on that topic? Mr. Nemeth, you first.
Yeah, thanks. Great question. So I do believe in the importance of universal screening. I think it's a data point, it's one data point. But you can take those standardized testing, which we do three times a year, plus the other tests that Ms. Oldson referred to, and you can actually track individual student performance. And I have experience with this, where you can, you can drill down to levels, you can have teams go in and analyze that, and you can, you can find the holes that students need. And obviously, there's, you can have universal screening, you can have, you know, summary tests, formative tests, you could do performance demonstrations. There is a gamut, but you need a task force. What our school needs right now is you need action. We've set a plan, or the board has set a plan, to evaluate for a year. I'm used to working in organizations and leading efforts where you have a shorter period of time, you get a tiger team together, you benchmark successful organizations, you bring those lessons learned back, and you immediately roll those implementations in iterations into the classroom. So there are many ways. You have to get feedback from parents, students, and teachers, and you need to go look at other schools of excellence and not compare yourself to mediocrity.
Mr. Nemeth, thank you. And Ms. Oldson, if it's not test scores, I guess I would ask, what is the implementation of an academic plan or a plan for academic improvement here?
I think test scores are important, but as Jean mentioned, it's one data point. You know, it's really interesting for people that come from industry, because I came from industry before I got really involved in the school system. And I will tell you, education moves at a snail's pace. And if it were so easy to reduce the achievement gap and make sure that all kids were on grade level, A, there'd be a millionaire in the world, and B, the entire United States would not be in the same situation where we're seeing declining test scores. We need to evaluate and look at the way kids learn, how they learn, how we're evaluating, and what tools teachers have. I still don't believe that a single test score is, gives an adequate picture of what a kid knows and what a kid doesn't know. And I also know that people that are developing rules and regulations for school districts and public education don't spend a lot of time in those classrooms and don't necessarily understand what they're measuring. So I think it's important for all people to come together that have a vested interest in that, parents, students, kids, teachers, mostly teachers. They're the experts in the field, and I think we need to respect their knowledge and understanding, and also make sure that those teachers have the tools that they need and the funding that they need in order to provide those kids with each individual aspect of the areas where they're not as proficient.
All right, Ms. Oldson, thank you. Let's move on to the next question. We just asked this of our Director III and IV candidates. We'll bring it to you, because it does feel like maybe a dividing line in public discussions. Banning books, I know some even take exception to that term. We'll just say, limiting the books you think should be allowed in schools, and further, how you balance what you think versus what you think should be district policy. Ms. Oldson, you're first.
Banning books, that's such a foreign concept to me. When, that's how you gain information, that's how you gain knowledge. I do believe that in our school libraries, that it should be age-appropriate, screened, channeled, but I also think that parents need to take a vested interest in their child's education and have conversations about what might be there. What's controversial to one parent may not be controversial to another. You know, we have a lot of students that don't have the opportunity to have a lot of parental input, whether they're homeless, or whether they're in foster care, or a whole gamut of things. And I think it's important that we provide information for them to have the access to, but ultimately, it goes back to the involvement of the school and the involvement of the parents, and just really understanding what that looks like across the board for each family.
All right, thanks, Ms. Oldson. Mr. Nemeth, the same question.
Yeah, I would agree that I'm not a fan of using the term banning, right? Because you can go to Amazon, you can go to a public library, and you can get access to this material. I do believe, though, that our public schools do need to have a screening process for age appropriateness, because what you would allow a high schooler who's a little bit more mature with regarding, you know, where they're at in their stage of life versus K through 5 is significantly different. And because we have such diversity in our schools, we have families that come from all over the world with different sets of beliefs, I think that we have to also factor that in, right? And school, to me, is, should be a neutral playing ground, right? It should be a very neutral, and you got to have criteria. So one is transparency. There should be never a time when the public doesn't know what's in our public, in our school libraries. And when, when parents or community members bring stuff up, we have to actually go examine this from a neutral eye, and we need to get, I think, staff, parents, and the board involved to go do an appropriate screening and not just push it off and say, no, no big deal. I mean, I think that each one warrants a proper screening and make a decision from there, that, you know, where you don't get a precedence, that it's each and every one on its own individual merits.
Thank you very much. Well, let's move on to question three, and let's talk curriculum. Surely, many parents and community members would like to have input on what students and their kids are learning in the classroom. So the question, should all constituent voices be represented in the selection of a school curriculum? With a couple of follow-ups, why or why not, and if so, how? Mr. Nemeth, that's you.
Okay. We do, in this district, actually have a, I would say, a very diverse group of staff, parents, and community members that get selected to our, I'll call it a task force, that do look at curriculum, and they do it over a fairly long and in-depth period of time. The social, emotional learning, I'll give that out there, you know, was done, I think, over the course of years, somebody could correct me, but it had parents, because my wife participated in it. So, and it was, it was very in-depth. They looked at 17, you know, and that's an exaggeration, different, different avenues or curriculum, and they examined, plus they did some pilots. So I think that, one is, we do here, you have to have parents, right? You have an application process, you have a selection process, and obviously, you can't have 10,000 voices. You have to get a representative group of parents, staff, and teachers in the room, and we entrust them to make a decision and then bring a recommendation to the board. And the board is really the last stamp of approval with the recommendation, and I think that that's where, it has to be a strong recommendation with the, with the ample metrics, and then the board makes their decision from there. So I think it's actually well-represented in Richland.
And Ms. Oldson, same question to you.
Yes, we have an incredibly robust, it's called the IMC, Instructional Material Committee. It's made up of teachers, administrators, parents. It's a very, very rigorous course. It's, I think they generally go about 18 months from start to finish, and it also includes the ability for any parent within the district to go in and evaluate and look at the curriculum. It's an open-door policy, there's no strings. I have probably approved, on my time on the board, probably four different curriculums, and without doubt, almost every one of those have had a 100% unanimous from the committee, because they're so thorough on going through the rubric of what's important and what's not, and you have to look at whether it meets state requirements for curriculum, how it fits within our community norms, how it fits for age appropriateness, what the experts and what the trend is, and how effective it's been in educating our students. So yes, and very much, it's important that the community and the staff and everybody is involved in that process.
All right, thank you very much. All right, let's move on to our fourth question, and this one has to do with hiring and retention, and not just for teachers, but bus drivers, paraeducators, secretarial staff, even substitutes for all positions. My own dad, in retirement, decided to take up a substitute job in the Yakima School District. My own dad, in retirement, decided to take up a substitute job in the Yakima School District. So I have to ask, what are your ideas regarding dealing with some of these shortages? Ms. Oldson?
Unfortunately, a lot of it comes back to funding. Education is one of those areas where we don't have the ability to make more revenue when we need it or we have greater needs. As the time has progressed, I think our students have greater needs than they used to. The way we teach and the way we interact with them needs to be completely different than the way it used to be. The stand and deliver model of education is, is not what the, what keeps these kids' attention. We need engagement. So of course it's funding. Outside of funding, we need to make sure that there's a great work environment. I'm really happy to say that Richland School District has a very high retention of their employees. Typically when we have applications, there is a high number of applicants from all over the different regions. Bus drivers, that's a tough one. I don't know of a single district in the state that is able to keep the number of bus drivers that they need. I think the answer to that is A, potentially some funding. I know that it's pretty comparable across the state, but also look at alternative methods. See how else we can go outside the box on some of these issues where we're, where we're not serving the students the way we should.
All right, Ms. Oldson, thank you very much. Mr. Nemeth, same question to you about...
Yeah, I mean, obviously it starts with funding, but the second piece of it is go to each group and figure out, you know, why, what are the, what are the causes or the reasons why people are leaving or they're unhappy? And I think that's a key that sometimes, you know, we let people go out the door, but we don't necessarily capture the lessons learned. Because it's not always about the money. Sometimes it is the work environment, sometimes it is the lack of communication, or, you know, frankly, it is working conditions. I mean, maybe there's aspects of teachers' lives or staff's lives, or I would say our maintenance and operations that we're overlooking. And frankly, the other piece of it sometimes is just simple, is get out there and give public praise, public recognition of these people that are going out of their way with pride to support our students, whether it's, you know, out there doing the janitorial work or the grounds work or moving from point A to point B. And I also think sometimes there is some validity in asking the community for some, hey, what are your thoughts about, maybe there are other ways we can manage to move children from point A to point B without, you know, hiring X amount of bus drivers? So again, I think you have to think out of the box for some of these because we are limited with funding. I mean, that's just the reality of the time.
As a teacher myself, I understand that issue as well. Well, let's move on to question number five, and Mr. Nemeth, back to you for this. If you're aware of this, please explain your understanding of the current state of state-mandated approaches to discipline in schools, and what are some of the challenges or positives of that mandate?
Yeah, I'm not as, probably as familiar with, with the exact mandate, but I will say that, you know, I'm a big advocate of accountability, and I think there's, there's different things. I think that there's forms of discipline that just don't work. I think you have to make discipline appropriate to the level of infraction, and it has to be a learning and a positive experience. So, you know, and I'm just going to use my day. In my day, I think there were some things that were just completely ineffective because kids are going to be kids sometimes. And, you know, applying the same level of judgment on each and every situation, in my opinion, doesn't work. And I'm just going to use my 33 years of Navy and corporate experience that, you know, you actually have to go figure out the underlying reasons of what's causing that behavior. So implementing things like your positive behavior intervention and, you know, RTI in the schools, and then actually sitting down with individuals that are having some struggles, and maybe there's home life issues, maybe there's a learning disability, maybe there's some that, that nobody has actually connected dots, talk to the educators. But until you get to the bottom of the why, sometimes that, just the one punishment fits all mentality just doesn't work.
Yeah, Ms. Oldson, same question. What is your awareness of the state mandates when it comes to discipline?
I'm pretty familiar with the state mandates, and the state mandates have made it so that it's really hard for there to be any form of discipline in schools, regardless of that way. There's inclusive, there's suspension laws, there's all these different laws. But Jean was absolutely correct in when he mentioned that we need to be able to get to the root cause. I am a firm believer that kids aren't naughty because they want to be naughty. They're naughty because they're trying to communicate with the adults in their life something that's making them frustrated or something that's, that's wrong or somewhere along those lines. So we need to be able to have the resources and the staff in order to do that, and then we also need to partner with parents. You know, I have a 20-year-old and a 23-year-old, and the discipline that I see now is very different than the discipline that I did. I always believed in positive reinforcement, but accountability and consequence. And the direction that we're going right now, there's not a lot of consequence. And so I think it's really hard for kids to be able to form boundaries and understand what that looks like. That's a big legislative issue that I'm working on, is trying to find that happy medium between being able to facilitate and manage a classroom and still staying within the guidelines that the state requires.
Ms. Oldson, thank you very much. Well, our sixth question will be our final question, and I know we talked a bit about the possibility of some closing statements, might have run out of time for those. But we do want to look to the future of the school board after what you might call a bit of a tumultuous summer, that recall that removed three directors from the board. So the question, pretty simple, Ms. Oldson, we'll start with you here. What's it going to take for the board to move past that, come together and then reestablish the public's trust?
Civil conversation, appreciating the fact that you can have different opinions but still come to a solution. I'm a firm believer that the majority of our community, that if we come together and look at things that we agree on, we all are want our kids to have a good education and be academically successful. We want them to be safe, we want good teachers, we want everybody to feel safe. And I think what happened during that process is we sort of got siderailed on some of the noise that's happening across the entire United States and in a variety of different areas. So I think it's just a matter of being able to work as a team, to collaborate, to see differences, to think outside the box, and I think most importantly is to respect each other. I think there was a loss of respect, and I think that there was a lack of teamwork in that. And so I think that a new board can bring that together and really instill that because a school district is really only as effective as their board is.
All right, Ms. Oldson, thank you very much, and thank you for being here. Mr. Nemeth, how does the board, in your opinion, move past what happened this summer?
I think it's pretty, pretty easy. I think what we have to as a board is you have to, you have to demonstrate to the public that the board is returning its focus back to student achievement. And that is something that I think we've been lacking. If you go to most meetings, it's hard to discern what aspect of the meeting is actually focused on student outcomes. It's hardly ever talked about, and we talk about a lot of stuff. I know the order of business has to be taken care of, but when the public sees the board focusing on the student and, and actually publicly recognizing the good and the bad that is going on in our school district and what we're doing to correct, you know, some deficient, I would say some deficient areas, you know, what are our corrective action plans? Why aren't the school leadership standing up in front of the public saying, hey, this is, this is where we're at in our school, and this is what we're doing about it, and we need your help? Because now you're drawing the community into it, right? And I think everybody can focus and rally around a student achievement, teacher supportive, parent-inclusive approach. And I think that's how you restore faith and trust back in the board and everybody's united because it's towards the student.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nemeth. And I, as a parent of kids in elementary school, I told this to the last group, I could probably talk to you for a long time about, as a parent, what we want for our kids in schools. We really appreciate your time here. Time goes by fast here. So we want to thank them, we want to thank all of our candidates. They are running for Richland School Board, position five. And that does it for a very Richland-heavy program for us tonight and concludes our third hour of election coverage here at NWPB's Vote 2023. Thank you to the League of Women Voters of Benton and Franklin Counties for organizing many of these, many of these forums. And one more thank you to all of our candidates. We managed to talk to a number of them today. Now, a quick reminder before we go, Election Day is coming up on November 7th. October 20th is the date for ballots to be mailed out. The deadline to register for mail voting is October 30th, but of course, you can register in person all the way up to Election Day. Now, our next program airing Thursday night on NWPB moves on to the city of Pasco. Several spots on their school board up for grabs, we'll have candidates for that race. We'll also begin our coverage of Pasco City Council races. Eventually, we'll hear from all eight of the candidates running for four open seats. Now, if you missed anything from our coverage of the races in Benton City, the Port, West Richland, Kennewick, or previous programs, or this one, you can find them all on the Northwest Public Broadcasting YouTube channel. Thanks for joining us.